Good evening. It's 6:01 PM, June 8th, 2021. Lake and Beach Unified School Board's open session is called Order. I will start with the pledge allegiance. So, Aaron, can you please lead us for the last time to the pledge allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This moves us to report on closed session. In closed session by vote 5-0, with all board members voting, we took action to approve Dr. Elizabeth Mannsberg, Mannsberg, is that correct? As Director of Assessment and Accountability. Mannsberg, we are excited that you're joining our leadership team and welcome you to LBSD. This moves us to 4D, adoption of agenda. Dr. Gloria is not able to be here tonight. He is under the weather. Ms. Weber, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. Staff is pulling public hearing 7A and will bring this item back on June 24th.
Thank you so much. Fellow board members, including our student members, can have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda.
We have approval of the agenda as amended.
Second. Perry, second. Any discussion before we vote? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
A student who is voting tonight, sorry?
I can.
Okay. No Hannah?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. The motion carries 5-0. Moves us to 5A, public comment non-agenda items. Mr. Colin, as Mr. Colin looks to see if anyone wants to make a public comment, procedure is written on agenda. I'll explain it this once in the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment and you're viewing the meeting via Zoom webinar, raise your hand prior to board discussion on an item you wish to speak to. Once recognized, unmute your microphone. If you're pressing, if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone if you'd like to comment during the designated comment period. Once recognized, to make your comment, press star six to unmute your phone. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comment. Speaking time is limited to three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes total. And your three minute starts when you are introduced by the board president. Staff will keep the time and mute speakers at three minutes. At 20 minutes, staff will notify the board president with consent from the board. The time may be modified to allow for additional public comment. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items tonight?
There's no one at this time.
Thank you so much. But that brings us to 6A, student board representatives for reports. And who is gonna start us tonight?
Start us off. Final, final report. So, as many of you know, this is for Joe and I, we are about to graduate. So, at the high school level, we've been participating in a bunch of senior activities. First off, we started with the prom, which was hosted, which was hosted in the quad. And then we had, let's see, after the prom, we had a paddle out on Monday. And now we had a yearbook signing today and looking forward to the other activities to come. And we're sadly saying goodbye to school. And of course, another set's also preparing for their commencement ceremonies as well. And now I'll pass off to a fifth grader from TOW, Bree Garrawal, who's here to give us a report from top of the world. Thank you, Bree.
We have a great year at TOW. We were so lucky to go back to school early in October. We have been able to do so many fun COVID-friendly activities to bring joy, service, and school cheer to our community. Some of these things include spirit days and lots of dress fit days. We also helped with promoting Mental Health Awareness Week. Student Council has been in charge of the Flag Salute and No Place for Hate pledges in the morning and even dolphin card drawings each Thursday afternoon. To serve our community, we ran a food drive, toy drive, made Valentine's cards for seniors, and uplifting signs and cards for Chalk Hospital.
Thank you so much, Bree. Yeah, that was great. We are so happy to have you on for our last board meeting. I'll finish it off with my last little bit of report. Luke or Soren did a great job with summarizing us finishing off school. Sad to see it go, but time to graduate. But um, the, in the time before, we had a Rachel Equity meeting. And in that meeting, we discussed and reflected on the work we had done prior and talked about what we have learned now and what we can do in the future and really planning for the time, our timeline in the future, and when we can get more stakeholder engagement. It's a great meeting and can't wait to progress with that. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you both. Thank you, Bree, for coming this evening. Really appreciate it. And we will be thanking our, recognizing our student board representatives in item A. This moves us to 6B, bargaining unit representatives. We'll start with our CSBA President Warder on the work on behalf of LBSD employees of the union represents. Where's yours?
Yes, good evening. Well, as I said last time, it's been a kind of a wild year and we've gotten through it. And it's great to hear that the high school was able to have some of their activities this year. Thurston is moving forward and even at our elementary schools. So that's an exciting time to know that we're well on our way to back to where. We would like to consider what normalcy might be. We're not sure what that's gonna look like, but we know it has to be a lot better than where we've been. And with that, I'd like to thank administration and the board. CSA closed our tentative agreement. We had a vote with a majority passing. And I am really pleased that we were able to finish this year out with a closed contract. And we also will be bringing to the board with Mr. Conlin's endurance and perseverance on our reclassification committee's recommendations at the next board meeting as we went through. As you'll see, it's a 105-page document. So I may be saying too much, but the bottom line is we got through all of that, looking at all of the clerical series and very pleased with the recommendations that came out of the reclass committee moving forward. So with that, great year. Lots of things happening with summer school for classified employees and of course, certificated employees that again shows the healthy growth that's going on in our school district and the exciting things that are happening. So with that, I wish everyone a great holiday as far as the summer season. Some of us are around more often than, you know, but some get to really take a few months off and enjoy. So with that, I will see you at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Margaret, for that report. Next is LaBufa President Hopper, representing LBSD's employees. But on behalf of LBSD employees that her union represents, Sarah, you have the floor.
Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to announce that the teachers have passed their contract and ratified it unanimously in whole. So that was good news and that we have also voted for two new officers for the LaBufa Board. Michelle Douglas, a second grade teacher at TOW, will fill the position of secretary. And Scott Whitkop is a high school visual arts teacher and head coach for cross-country and track. And he will fill the position of vice president. And we have two more days of school left to end this year and we are looking forward to a maskless summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, that would move us deep, but Dr. Gloria is not here, so we'll see that moves us to D. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours. Your floor and operations, your department.
Thank you, President Normandin. I just want to say congratulations to all the students, staff, families. It's been a tough year, as Margaret said, and we've made it through and we're really looking forward to the summer and what's coming up next. As far as business services, there's a lot of new reporting that we have to do with all the relief funds. But thankfully, we have an amazing staff between Ray Li, Tui Buie, Shadi Tavares, Marie in payroll. We're making it happen and it's, it's been, it's been busy but good and we're looking forward to doing what's best on behalf of our students with these one-time funds. So we'll talk more about it in our, in our budget report, but thank you again to, and congrats to all the students and thank you classified, certified. It's been, it's been a year, but you're, you're appreciated more than you know. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice of you, Mr. Dixon, to say it that way. And so, Mr. Colin, the floor is yours.
Always, it's always something. Alright, so try to unmute myself this time. We are definitely excited to be celebrating at all four campuses this week with the promotions and the graduating students. So congratulations to all of those students. And as we shared at a closed session, we're definitely excited to welcome Dr. Kennenberg to the instructional services team. And we look forward to formally introducing her at the June 24th board meeting. And again, like Jeff had said, you know, special thanks to all the, all the students and staff for all their incredible work of bringing the, the 2020, 21 school year to a close. It has been something like, like no other and it's been an incredible amount of a collective lift that it took to get to this point. So thank you to everyone for, for their hard work and definitely enjoy the time off if you're choosing to take time off. If not, we will enjoy seeing the district office this, this summer. And then last but not least, my, my department will just, will continue to spend our summer months preparing for the 21, 22 school year and yeah, that's where we're at. So thank you.
Thank you for that report. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, I will probably sound a little bit like the previous ones, but I have some updates that I'll share and later on at the board meeting and my presentations. But I definitely want to take this time as we finish up the school year with just two days left to just take a minute to thank our students and staff, administrators, teachers for all the hard work they've done this school year. One of the things I appreciate most about our staff is that they too are learners, that they're always continuously striving to improve. What that looks like through the lens of the instructional services department is a very personalized attention for students. Last spring, that was phone calls homes. That was home visits by staff to get kids' resources, to sometimes even just get them back online. Daily adjustment to curriculum, creating new adventure, new interventions, which, and new adventures, new assessments. And most importantly, prioritizing relationships first. I can't emphasize that enough. I think we all know the same. Nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care. That's what I see when I'm in classrooms, I'm in Zooms, I'm in meetings with teachers and staff and administrators. There have been a lot of challenges this last year, but there have also been a lot of bright spots that will definitely lead our pathway forward and evolve our practices for whatever the new normal looks like in the future. And so for this, we have our staff to thank. So kudos and a thank you to, to our staff and students for all the work they've done this year. Thank you.
Wow. Good well said.
President Normanan?
Yes.
Before you move on to the public hearings, I just want to comment on how appreciative I am that we have consistently had such positive attitudes from those in these positions who report to us, from the presidents of our unions to our assistant superintendents, to our superintendent and to our student reps who have come to each meeting looking for what they could have gratitude for in spite of how the year has gone. And the ability to do that, of course, strengthens each of them as a person, but it also lets us see and reminds us as board members that in spite of all that goes on and all behind the scenes, that when you come to your group meetings and you look for what you can be grateful for, it really will have a positive impact on the district and on the students going forward. So I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
I'm thankful for that as well. Nicely said. This takes us to number seven on the agenda, public hearings. Since 7A was pulled from the agenda, there will be four public hearings this evening and we'll start with 7B. Public's invited to speak to the public disclosure of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AB 1200, Chapter 1213-1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title 5, Section 15449, and 2021-2024 negotiated agreement with California School Employee Association, and it's the beginning of each chapter, number 131. I apologize after read all this stuff, it was public hearing. Now, the public hearing on item 7B is open at 6:16 PM. Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak to this item tonight?
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you very much. This one says there are no speakers. We shall close public hearing at 6:16 PM and move to number 7C on the agenda. 7C, this is opportunity for the member of public to speak to the public disclosure of proposal in accordance with AB 1200, Chapter 1213-1991, Government Code 3547.5, and CCR Title 5, Section 15449, 2021-2022 Compensation Proposal with Non-Representative Classified and Certified Employees. Public hearing on, on item 7C is open at 6:17 PM. And Mr. Colin, is there anyone wishing to speak?
And there are no hands up at this time either.
Thank you. We shall close public hearing at 6:17 PM and move to 17D and E on the agenda. Dr. Mayberry and Mr. Dixon will provide a joint presentation for the full up on LCAP and budget. As conclusion of the presentation, we'll take public comments for each individual item and also board comments. Oh, when we close the hearing and we'll take questions and comments from board members. Dr. Mayberry, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this is, this is our public hearing and so related to the LCAP and the budget, Mr. Dixon and I will kind of share a general overview of that and then, you know, if there are comments or questions, they can be, they, they can happen during this or they can be submitted or we can respond to them later. So either way, we're excited to present this new LCAP. The LCAP is, the primary purpose of the LCAP is really to address the eight state priorities and ensure that they meet, we meet the specific needs of these significant subgroups that the state defines as English learners, foster youth, and low-income students. There is a timeline. If you go to next slide there, it'll show the timeline of a typical, take a typical review. Now, this year is a little unique. We know the LCAP was delayed until this year. So some of this, some of this, we would have been here a year ago presenting this and we ended up doing several other plans instead. But the typical process is we do a lot of data analysis in the summer. We continue to work on goals and our school, our school plans for the fall and start to implement some of the actions and services. In the winter, we traditionally do a lot of, do more of our heavy surveying of parents, students, stakeholders, community members, staff. And then start to, some of our, circle back out to our stakeholder groups. That might be an English learner parent group. We have an LCAP advisory group, school site councils. We, we use that to really try to encompass all that input from our stakeholders to make the LCAP. So this year, we actually, we really have two years of information since we didn't have one last year. So you'll see some of the themes come through. The next slide has the LCAP elements. And I just share this because I think if you've looked at these before, you know that there's, there's a lot of parts to it. Our goal this year was to try to simplify it. We, we, we do have the draft, current draft does have three goals instead of the previous five, which I'll share a little bit. And you can see there's a lot of input and metrics that go into it between the surveys and student achievement and social emotional wellness and data and then screener. So a whole host of information that goes into that. And then you'll see on the next slide, a lot of the different stakeholder groups that we kind of circle in and out throughout the year to get input and data from. Obviously, I think one of the more bigger ones we do is the LCAP survey, which is, I think this year was around 1,600 responses between students, staff, and parents. And we've done some thought exchange, work with our SOPA. And we do a lot of this work with our leadership teams as they align their SIPs as their school plans with this. And you'll see those kind of common themes. There's a word called there that kind of, we worked out with the LCAP advisory around what we really want our students to, the skills and what was the priorities for the next three years. And you'll see in the next couple of slides, really these themes come out around career readiness and social emotional wellness. So this is a part, is the LCAP dashboard from, from the 2019, 2020 school year. So this, if, this is why it shows growth from year to year. So you'll notice there's blue and green in there. But this is, data is a year old. So we have some of this data that goes with it. But we also, this, the, because it's two years of data, the state won't have this for another year. So we have to look at the data more individually instead of this dashboard, but once they kind of get caught up on the data, since a lot of it did not happen, a lot of the assessments didn't happen last year, that they won't be able to have a new dashboard, it sounds like until about 2022. But this is where it was about a year, year and a half ago. And then if you look here, this is the survey, it's kind of the key findings across the two years of survey that we've done. Again, a lot of the career readiness, career preparation, real-world applications, a lot of stakeholders reference that. There's an increased priority, continues to be an increased priority on social emotional development, mental health support, especially in the last year, along with equity, work, equitable practices. We're saying that we're continuously, it also an increased priority that we support a personalized learning experience. So that differentiated a learning piece, the student agency where students are taking ownership of their learning, where they have a voice and they have choice. And then the continued, our stakeholders perceive our schools as safe, caring places. And then these are just the top five thoughts from our thought exchange this year. We don't have as many respondents as we do in our survey, but we do have thousands that are rated. But you'll see some of those similar needs when we ask the question around what are the priorities for the next three years? And obviously, you know, there was a lot going on this year. So it's a challenge to separate all the, the, the impact of school closure or hybrid learning or distance learning from what we're thinking about three years from now. But you'll see there's around challenging courses was really, really important for our community. Social emotional support, preparing students for college or trade school, that kind of career readiness skills. Having open, honest dialogue about current events, that this is a place where kids can do this and learn those skills. Offering courses that are interesting, engaging for students. So some similar, some of those similar themes again. So that leads us to our, our goals for the LCAP. So we've landed within the LCAP advisory, going, going back and forth with our leadership groups, kind of landed on these three goals. One around college and career readiness skills. And then the second one, around social emotional competencies and positive self-identity or self-identity for students. And they made ensuring that they're safe, equitable, inclusive schools through the learning environment, targeted support, strategic planning, stakeholder engagement. So all of our actions and services align with those. So I'm going to share just some, some of the key actions that would go with each goal and some of the data that will, that is currently in the LCAP that's attached to the board item. It's obviously is a lot, a lot longer, right? They tend to, the pages tend to add up due to the requirements, but this first goal is really around a lot of academic support, differentiated learning, our early childhood program, college and career-based programs, professional learning to support that, making sure our students have standards-aligned materials. And then we have systems of information to monitor that assessment systems and as well as learning management systems. And then this one will have a lot more academic metrics to measure it. This is not all of them, but this is, this is overview of some of them. And certainly LCAP doesn't include everything we measure. We, we, we have a lot more that impacts our decision-making. But these are some of the key ones that we try to put into the LCAP. Obviously, the state tests are a big one. These is from, these are a year old, actually two years old. There's a lot of graduate data that the state prioritizes around state seal by literacy, graduation rates, UC course completion rates. Graduates who pass at least one AP exam, that's a big indicator for success in college. So they really, these are, some of these metrics are required, some that we are able to choose. These ones really connect around that college and career readiness skills and align with what the state's priorities are. That second goal around social emotional competencies and self, and self-identity through student agency, engagement, resiliency, and positive relationships really, really emphasizes a lot of the work that we've been doing in recent years on social emotional wellness, social emotional learning. That curriculum that we have at the elementary level, the supplemental curriculum at the secondary level, a lot of those screeners that we've done. But then also looking forward and how do we build agency in students? How do we have students really take ownership of their learning? How do we make sure students have exceptional character? So that there's some actions that are connected to those and services, targeting support, obviously, you know, part of that social emotional wellness. It can impact behavior, it can impact attendance. So there are some services that are connected to there, our health, our health services as well as mental health services are really important. And then of course, professional learning to support all of these, this, this really emphasis on relationships and having a connected learning experience for students. And then some of the data, this one tends to have, has, there are some more qualitative data connected to this around attendance rates, suspension rates. But then we also emphasize student, staff, and parent perceptions through a survey. So these are, these are data points through LCAP survey that we are continuing to work on. We think it's really, really important that kids are regularly, regularly participating and engaging learning activities, right? That they feel like there's effective, effective social sports. Really, that bottom one is really an ongoing data point that we talk about a lot, that the student have at least one caring relationship with a teacher or staff. So we work on those and we'll break those down with our data, to segregate them with our, with our sites and, and look, try to look at different ways to really dig deeper into some of these metrics. You go to the, this goal three here around safe, equitable, inclusive schools, which is kind of related to the learning environments, strategic planning, stakeholder engagement. A lot of the pre, you know, we were spending a lot of emphasis pre-pandemic around safe learning environment and safety committees and safety plans. Those are included in this goal. A lot of our community partnerships, parent education opportunities, communication is a very high priority, continuing trying to find more ways to improve that and connect and reach, reach our parents. Providing targeted support for some of our most vulnerable student populations, English learners, students with disabilities, students who are economically disadvantaged. Within there is also food and transportation services. It was a part of, a, a part of the, part of the plan, including facilities and student learning environments. We know we're kind of wrapping up some of the, the more heavy lifting with the four CLA classrooms. Because that works been going on for several years now, but there'll continue to be improvements and updates to that. So that would be built into this, this goal. And then really around ensuring that we have student equity and there's systems that support really the financial stability, right? That we're looking long-term with, with the way we are strategically planning. And then looking at data related to this, obviously, we're constantly looking at performance gaps. It could be performance gaps and relates to student achievement. We also just tried to segregate the data when we can around student surveys to see if there's any gaps and perceptions of the learning experience. We have our, how are, are English learners are doing is really, is a high priority to us. We have a 23% reclassification rate and we think it'll be pretty close to that this year. We had a recognized a 13, I believe, students earlier this week for being reclassified as proficient English learners. So they now have that official by literacy a reclassification. However, we know there's other students that we're still supporting with that. And so we'll continue with that work. We're always, you know, our facilities team and our maintenance team is constantly updating our facilities so that when we do, we do do a review or evaluation of them, that they're all evaluated as in good repair. And then that happens annually. That review, there's certainly some professional learning that is connected through here and we want students to feel safe on campus. So you kind of see a range of data to try to get at it. Obviously, we know there's much more impacts to our decisions beyond that. But these are really, you know, some of the things, ways we will measure this goal three here. And then that just leaves, Jeff, Mr. Dixon's going to get into the budget in more detail. But I did want to just bring in this, this part here on the supplemental Title I funds. Supplemental will be the state, which is really the main, and the main reason this, this plan came about several years ago was how do we support these more vulnerable student populations? So that, that supplemental funds, it's typically around, around 650,000 a year. And then we do get Title I funds from the, from the federal government, that's typically around 200,000. And then this year, we have our expanded learning opportunities funds, it's one-time funds that we've been really emphasizing a lot of the work as well. We're, that's very connected to the LCAP, right? And that includes access to technology, increase instructional learning time. We're going to be hiring some more staff. We're trying to keep our class We're trying to keep our class size a little bit smaller, so there's really a lot of connection with that. And so some of those are, those actions are built into this. And then this is again, just for reference, it's a lot to, the LCAP is a lot to digest. So that's, that is why they have the hearing and then have a separate, separate date for approval. So as questions come up, you know, people want to process that and that may not have been involved in the development. And so these are the, those three goals that we have planned for the next three years.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mayberry. There, that is a lot to digest and I can tell everyone firsthand experience that Dr. Mayberry spends a lot of time on this and works closely with our office. Because when we develop a budget, it is a living document that reflects the goals and priorities of the school district. And that's something that you'll see constantly reinforced in our budget book. And you will see it again in what's been attached and proposed for the two thousand twenty one, twenty two budget. I'm going to go through just the brief highlights of the budget that follows the flow of the book. So we're going to start first with revenues, we'll go to expenditures, and then there's some key points that I want to highlight at the end. That I think are important, that we all just need to keep in the back of our mind as we, we look going forward. So revenue wise, it still continues as stable revenue, revenue growth. Things do enlarge to our property tax. As a community funded school district, just as a general reminder, about eighty five percent of our total revenue comes from local property tax. And then one question that has come up historically that we've now added to the budget, budget book is how much of the property tax do we get for Laguna Beach? And the answer is about twenty five cents for every dollar of property tax received by the city. So you'll see on page sixteen, it breaks down where each dollar of property tax goes. And I thought that would be a good addition for the budget book. In terms of our expenditures, about seventy two million in expenditures, the bulk obviously being with salaries and benefits. Those are the, the largest drivers, we are a people business. So the largest cost for every school district is going to be within the people. And then we have, of course, our book supply services and capital outlay and transfers. When we look at the components of the ending fund balance, one thing that I would like to call out is, we've seen this in the past, we saw this last year. The assignments for the eighty twelve hundred collective bargaining agreements are built into the ending fund balance, because we just don't have time to build it in to the budget prior to development, based on when negotiations close for the year. So you'll see the impact there. There's also a line in there for universal transitional kindergarten, which is a proposal by the governor and the state legislature at this point. It's not been finalized. But what it is looked like so far is that it, they're building funding in for the universal TK program into the LCFF. Which as a community funded district, we do not get funds for, but we could be required to still provide that program. So what we've done is provided one point five million dollars, one time money. Not ongoing to start up and that mostly has to do with the facility changes that would be required to create a universal transitional kindergarten program. Dr. Valoria and I have been advocating very hard through schools for sound finance, school services in California to try and make sure that community funded districts are given the same ongoing funding that the LCFF districts are. But it's not been determined at this point, so that's why you're going to see a built into the ending fund balance, at least for the startup costs. And then, of course, we have the same potential one time that's built in for board goals. And that's a typical amount that's been consistent for the past three years. This is just a reminder of the CARES Act funds that we know we're receiving or have received. This is on page eighteen of the budget book, so I, I apologize, I just use the acronyms because it gets very long if I put it all on the slide. But it's about six point four million dollars. The vast majority, ninety nine percent of that is received this year and next year. And I'll explain a little bit more about why that is important on a multi year projection slide later. But it's been, it's been appreciated, these are the COVID relief funds that have been necessary to offset costs and then also support the returned in person and ongoing in person instruction. Some of the things that I think get lost when you talk budget and looking at the long term cost impacts is the the pension costs, oftentimes we just relay it as a percentage and that percentage is tied to salary. So even if the percentage stayed flat, salaries go up naturally by step and column. So here you can actually see the dollar amounts and this is assuming no buy down by the state, which is currently be considered by legislature and the governor. So this could slow, but as is last time, the costs don't go down, they just slow down. So it's, it's, it's impactful for us, because as I mentioned, these are costs that are, you, you don't see, you don't feel unless you're dealing with the budget. Another very significant impact in cost increase for us has to do with unemployment insurance. And you can see here historically, it's between twelve and twenty thousand dollars per year. Is our district's contribution on behalf of employees for unemployment insurance. Next year, it's about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We saw a very similar, similar spike back after the great recession to a point seven percent increase. But this pandemic has caused a one point two, three percent increase. And so it's, it's more significant than we've experienced in the past. But it is included in the budget and it is an expense that we, we know we have to plan for. And going to the multi year projection, something that I talked about before was the, the one time money and how that impacts revenues and expenditures. So you can see the multi year, we're, we're positive every year, but when you go from next year, two thousand twenty one, twenty two, in terms of expenditures, you actually see a decrease to two thousand twenty two, twenty three. And the reason that is because that assumes all the one time revenue and expenditures have been used and we return to some sort of normalcy. So that's kind of a reset of, of our standard operating budget and that's the only reason it declines. We're not assuming any cuts at that point, we're just assuming that all this one time money that we use for technology disinfecting services. Temporary staff, that's all been used and we go back to kind of our standard in twenty two, twenty three. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions and then I just would like to close with saying I thank you, Ray and Twee in my office. We spent a long time, especially with the COVID relief funds, talking about our assumptions and building this. So thanks to them, without them, it would not be possible.
Well, and Mr. Dixon, and Board members, before we take comments, we have to do a public comment. So then we'll come back to questions and comments for you there. So Mr. Paul, is anyone wishing to speak to, I'm sorry, I have to read all this. Speak to the Laguna Beach Unified School District's local control accountability LCAP for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, prior to final adoption at the next board meeting on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, as required by education code five two zero sixty. And then we'll have public comment through the budget after this, but does anyone want to speak to the LCAP?
So President Normandin, you opened the public hearing at six forty, is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, and that's what I'll get to now, oh, sorry, and the public hearing on seventy is open at six forty P M. That was my next line, thank you, Victoria.
There are no hands raised at this time.
There are no hands, okay. Then I'll close the public hearing or we'll close the public hearing at six forty P M as well.
That was a public hearing for the LCAP?
For the LCAP and the budget, because they were, they're joined from, no, that was a public hearing just for LCAP, we're going to, we're open. We're going to open budget. But before we do, I want to see if, since there are no speakers, I want to see if there are any comments from school board members or student representatives on either of the two presentations. We can do comments now and then I can open. He, the public comment for the hearing. Is that correct, Victoria? That's how I have them, I just want to make sure that.
Yes. I said one quick question for Jeff on the, the TK proposal coming from the state. How many other districts would be in the same situation we are, that they would not be receiving LCFF funds and would need to pay for it themselves?
At this point, all community funded school districts. If it's built into the LCFF, community funded districts do not get those grants. So if it's a requirement, we would have to foot the bill with our.
I've lost track of how many districts that is approximately.
About a hundred.
Thank you.
Looking, any other comments or questions from Board members, go ahead. You're muted.
Did you have, for Jeff, did you have any idea about the, the big change in the unemployment? Did, did they give you a clue that might be coming?
No, I mean, that's why when you look at that chart, you go back two thousand thirteen, it was pretty flat, about twenty thousand every year. But then if you go back to the great recession, you see, okay, there was a little spike, but at the same time, we didn't have layoffs. As a result of the pandemic as a school district. So it was unexpected and for us, thankfully, we're small. So while it's significant, I can only imagine what some of the larger districts are experiencing, because it's a percentage of payroll.
Yeah. And then I, I have some comments on the LCAP, but I can wait till questions are.
Oh, no, that's now, for both of them, because they presented them both like that, we could do both of them now.
Okay, okay. I, I'm, I'm very impressed with getting so much into the three main goals. I love the college and career part and the social, emotional and inclusive part. I would, I, I think that the arts are so important in SEL also. I love that we have so many counselors and we have so many our SSS people. But we, we know that the arts also decrease anxiety, feelings of anger and depression. And the whole creative process fosters greater self awareness, it helps students regulate their emotions. It enhances cognitive abilities. And I, I know in other states like New Jersey, for example, example, they're doing, they're collaborating their arts and their SEL programs to create pathways that will work on the SEL competencies and link those to specific visual and performance arts and music standards. And when we think about like theater, which enhances communication and it's a terrific way to build empathy with students. If you play a part instead, you, you get it when you, you read a book, but when you actually play a part, I think of of third grade reading Go Free or Die. And when they play, you know, got to act out being Harriet Tubman and have the, the slave owners chasing them, I mean, they, they really get it in a deeper way. And then the, the drawing and painting is so good for memory and problem solving. And it's also an emotional outlet and stress relief. And then music and dance for coordination and pattern recognition and to develop confidence, confidence, a sense of achievement. Imagination, being a part of a group. Sometimes music can express emotion in ways that words can't. And I think of Let's Go Crazy by Prince and How Can You Just Stay Still When You Hear That? Or Strange Fruit by Billie Holiday, you know, the, the one about the lynchings in the south. And that sadness or the Hallelujah Chorus by Handel. And the arts foster growth mindset, which is something that we are, have been working on. And because it's a chance to develop grit and resilience and confidence when you practice and practice your instrument. And the arts are so important for cultural understanding too, as well as self understanding. So I would really, I would really like more of the arts built into, into that. For our kids.
I'd like to ask clarification, built into what?
Well, okay, so on, for instance, on page ten of the fifty pages. Where it says a hundred percent of elementary schools will be supported by specialist teachers in world languages, science, music, computer science and physical education. I, I think it should also be visual and arts and drama. And I think we should, I think that should be there. That's what I mean by specifics.
Okay, so you're in the second, the second report, right? There's two reports, one sixty four pages and one fifty pages.
The second, I mean, the second fifty page report, but I thought you wanted something specific.
I did, I did, I was just trying to find it.
I think that it would really help our elementary kids in so many ways. You know, we know if you have a, if you have a purpose and if you're part of a group, it makes you much healthier and happier and the arts can do that.
Yeah, I think I'll just jump in real quick, I think we, we too, we think we probably all agree that there's such a, such an emphasis and value for visual performing arts for students and how it connects them to school and connects them to groups. It also builds agency, I think you're, you're speaking to, probably one of the challenges of writing this, right? Is, is so much of these overlap, right? And I think, and so, you know, there's no, there's no easy way to probably include it across all goals. Because it is important, you know, the way it lends itself and it's written in here is through the lens of providing a really engaging, connected learning experience for students, although even though it falls under goal one. I think, you know, when I, when we work with teachers and we talk about it, we're, we're talking about some of the things that you're describing. And, you know, the offering of, the data point on offering a broad course of study is really about ensuring that that happens, that it doesn't go away, that there's not some reason that we don't offer those, those types of classes, that kids find their connection, right? And it couldn't, for some it is that, and for some it's doing more hands on work in a multimedia class, right? They find their way to connect. And I think that is important and I really, it does carry into both goals. It happens to fall, the, the actions and, and metric kind of falls to the first goal around, around the engaging, you know, experience in the class. But I, I think we agree that that is an important part of connecting kids to school.
Thank you, yeah, I didn't know exactly how to put it in there, but goal one, two or three, but I think it's very important to have.
No.
We are all in agreement of how important arts are and after our resolution with mental health and what the kids put together for that too. At different times, you really see those expressions. Are there any other comments or questions from the other board members? Thank you, member, oh, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I still, so as you said. Oh, sorry.
I don't know, go ahead, sorry, I don't, I'm sure what happened there.
I was going to ask, so given that it is very difficult to, you know, separate these all kind of blur together. Would it possibly be more beneficial to move the metrics to the end of after the goals? As it's very hard, as you said, to kind of measure one goal, like, like agency could definitely impact, you know, grades, academics, AP tests. Even though right now that's only under goal one. And so I think that that might take away from the other goals. And if we're looking at this, okay, what, what goals do we meet, what goals do we not meet? It might be difficult if we're using, if we're defining the metrics before we even know what those results are in a way. And that, what might be limiting us in this, in the scope of, you know, defining the impact and did we meet these goals? How do these goals affect our students and, and that line of reasoning?
I, I agree, sorry. The, the challenge, one of the challenges is that the state requires them to be placed in certain spots. But again, you were speaking to, speaking exactly what a lot of, of our department and staff thinks of like, we know, like, best example, one of the samples I use all the time, it's similar or maybe similar, is that we know the impact of social emotional wellness and, and, and mental health has on academics, it's huge. And so, but we have it separated as a separate, a separate goal. And in order to, to really emphasize that, but we know if kids don't have strong social emotional wellness and their, their grades are going to be impacted. So the, I, I like the way you're thinking and if you end up working for the California Department of Ed, like, please let me know, I will, I will help you, I will help you make that shift. But I know, I appreciate, I really appreciate you saying that in all seriousness, I think it's, all these data points are really valuable. But they don't tell the whole story. I think it's all these data points are really valuable, but they don't tell the whole story, right? Like, they're a good way to get things going and digging deeper. But the whole story is, you know, what we, teachers see in classroom, what kids see in classrooms and conversations that we have.
And then Clark Osborne, I just want to remind everyone, questions and comments, because it does come back on the agenda for when we have discussion, just to make sure. Go ahead, Clark Osborne.
Thanks, President Norman. And Dr. Mayberry, on those measurable outcomes, you know, we have the goals, we have the measurable outcomes. I think all goals should have a measurable outcome, even if that's just part or the beginning of the conversation. But did we experience any difficulties in actually having that data? Because so much of our assessments and so much of our data perhaps changed this year because of the pandemic. Like, I'm looking at those measurable outcomes, trying to see year-over-year trends. And it seems like some of our big, high-level data that we would rely on is kind of missing. And how are you, how are you, how are you grappling with that?
Yeah, I mean, the one big piece of data obviously is the CASP and the ASPECT, right? Like, that wasn't implemented last year, this year, due to all the different modes of learning and the impact of COVID. We went with, you know, iReady, which was an assessment that was more student-friendly, more accessible. And so our our staff is, we don't know the kids are, I think we had a, I thought we were done on Friday. We had a couple of more kids doing their last makeups this week. And kind of as that wraps up, that's, that's a lot of the work we'll be doing in the summer is to segregating that and try to find a connection so we can look year over year. You know, that that obviously presents challenges when you're looking across different data sets. But it still tells us a lot of information. That's probably the really big one. Most of the other data, we got at least a picture of it this year. Obviously, we have to factor in that, you know, this was a unique year. So some of our survey data was different than it typically is in the normal years. You know, a lot of our graduate data did have similar patterns. So that was a good sign.
Great, thank you.
President Norman.
Yeah, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a couple of comments or questions for Dr. Mayberry. One, I saw that the chronic absentee rate is 6%. I'm concerned about that. I know it's, it's, it's much less than it was when I came on the board. But I just don't understand why we're still at 6%. Another, another in the weeds type of questions, which was is is an important one, was about a question that was asked regarding facilities and that none of the students had any complaints about facilities. I think that's just a wonderful, a wonderful statistic and a wonderful statement of what our, what our facility staff and and what Jeff has achieved in that area. And then the third thing I was concerned about is that 5% of our students do not feel safe at school. And I'd be interested to know what we're doing about about that. And my last comment has to do with, there's a, in one of the slides, there is a comparison between college and trade schools or something like that. And I think trade schools is kind of dated. And I'm just wondering if that's a state term that we have to put in there or if we could put, you know, college and careers or something like that. Thank you.
I can answer the the statement about trade school was from Thought Exchange. So that was actually someone from the community used that, used that terminology. And then because it gets rated, I believe it was the second or third highest rated one. It then that stuck, but it's not, we wouldn't use, that's not a language that we use or the districts continue to use. But I think we've kind of, I think we understand what they're trying to communicate. And people certainly were connected to it based on how they rated it. Was there another question? I just want to make sure I was able to.
The one, the other was about the chronic absentee rate at 6%.
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's been an ongoing emphasis. You know, five years ago, six years ago, that was above, right? As sure you know, it's above the county average. I think we were closer to 11 or 12%. Now we're down to.
Yep, when I came on the board, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. I still think 6% is too high.
Yeah, we agree. We agree. It's an ongoing emphasis at the at the school sites. And one of the things that helps with that is that when, when, as it gets smaller, we, our interventions, we can do more frequent interventions, we can do more personalized interventions. So that can, and that's a district average. If you go into schools, there, you know, they can be a little bit different. And we can kind of really pinpoint it a lot easier at 6% or I think it's actually about 62 or 6.3. Then we are, when we were able to at 11 or 12%, it was really a district-wide initiative to get it down to something where we now we can really pinpoint and target that support.
And my last comment was about the 5% of students do not feel safe in our schools as far as what, what, what is that about?
That's it. Well, that's a, that's a survey question. So there's a student perception of not feeling safe on campus. And so we take that data, look at it by school site. Look at it by grade level and really see if we can find a pattern. And so right now that looks like to be, it typically, it typically hovers around that, give or take a few percent each year in the past. So I think our sites are continuing to look at what kind of things they can do around the culture of feeling safe, students feeling safe, what they can do around their learning environment so that kids feels, because it's not necessarily just safe, physically safe, right? It's also emotionally safe. And so those are, all those pieces are all built into the school plans as well as a as a high priority.
And I have one comment for Mr. Dixon. I'm grateful that he's putting the pitch and obligations slide in the budget presentation and his comments about that, because I think they're, they're really important for the future, that we know where we're at with those obligations. Thank you.
Member Pickers.
One question, well, thank you to Jeff for putting in the figures about where the property tax dollars go. And I think that's really good information. And for Dr. Mayberry, what numbers indicate chronic absenteeism?
No, thank you for asking that. That's for any students that are absent 10% more of the year. So it's an ongoing one that we check throughout the year. So in a full year, that's 18 absences out of 180 days. When we check that periodically, if it's at the beginning of the year, it might be 40 days into the year. We're looking at four absences or halfway through the year at 90, we're looking at nine absences. And so our sites have developed very specific plans. This year, they actually did it around engagement, because kids at the beginning of the year are on campus. But they're using, they're using that daily, the good thing about that is we get a daily attendance report, obviously. And so we're able to take action a lot sooner than we are in some of the other data that's in here.
Thank you. Are those any absences or absences not count?
That's any absences. That's, that's mainly a lot of that, that came about as a big emphasis, probably five to eight years ago, when there's a lot of research around that long-term impact at 10%. And so that's when the state added it and as one of their key metrics.
Thank you.
With it, see if there's any other. Any other unmuted mics? So Dr. Mayberry, just real quick on absentee, is that if it's partial or a whole day? You know, you might miss something for sports or you might miss something for a doctor's appointment. Does that count as chronic?
Chronic absenteeism is, is most cases, a full day. If they're here for a period, they don't, you should count as chronic absenteeism.
Thank you for that clarification. And then I did want to, one, thank you for taking such a complex, predefined process and turning it into a simplified slideshow that really could express what was most important, not everything, what's most important. And really appreciate that, that you were able to do that. I think it's one of the first times I saw it and I really felt like, oh, I really get it. It could be because I've heard it so many times, right, broken down, but it was, it was different. I really appreciate the fact that you did that. And then Jeff, did we, my fellow board members on comments of how you keep improving the budget process. And really thank you for taking the regular questions you get from any stakeholder and turning those answers into something that's in the budget that we can, you can point to. It, it's just, it's wonderful to see, it's wonderful to watch you and your team groom this living document. And for us all to be able to be aware of and have access to it and see where, you know, our dollars are going. As taxpayers and as parents and employees and employer. So really appreciate that. And that you built into the budget, not just other things that were mentioned, but also TK and the fact that there might be exposure to that to us just right up and ongoing, and also the board goals that you built it in. We very much appreciate that. Thank you both for that presentation. And I could see why it was combined. I understand. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. He conducted that. It was wonderful. And with that, we're going to move to 7E on the agenda. So, Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing, wait, before I ask you, sorry. This is an opportunity for members of public to speak to Laguna Beach Unified School District's budget for the year ending June 30 of 2022, prior to the final adoption at the next board meeting on June 24, 2021, as required by ED Code 52062. Public hearing is on item 70 and it opens at 7:02 PM. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on LBSD budget?
There are no hands up at this time.
So much. Then the board will close the public hearing at 7:03 PM. And we'll move on to 8A, recognitions for LBSD 2021, 2020, 2021 retirees. Board of Education recognizes and graduates our staff members who have retired or will be retiring school year. Laguna Beach Unified School District is privileged to recognize these dedicated members of the LBSD family. Staff members who dedicate many years to an organization are both knowledgeable about their responsibilities and provide a sense of continuity and familiarity to our students and families. We're honored to recognize these individuals for their service and wish them the best as they move into the next chapter of their lives. On the floor is yours, a presentation.
Thank you very much, President Normandin and first the board. So yeah, this is always an exciting time of the year to just recognize and celebrate our retirees, for those that have done this amazing work and many, many years of service to the district. We have, we have four retirees with us. I'll introduce some in a moment. But we do have for, for, for 2020, 2021, we have the following retirees. So congratulations to Mari Anderson, Deborah Arianas, Anne Bergen, Dawn Brown, Kristen Howar, Betsy Klein, Dorinda Klein, Gwen Myers, Deborah Nash and Donna Todd. We have a little video that we'd like to play. And then we're going to introduce it kind of in alphabetical order, the our, our four retirees who joined us on the, on the Zoom call today. So give me a moment. I'll play the video. Everyone see that? Okay?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. All right. Special thanks to Kayla, our new communication specialist and Shelley for helping to put that together for us. So let me get to the right page. All right. So we have, so we'll go with Anne, go first name alphabetical. So Anne, if you want to unmute and turn on your camera.
Hi.
So first off, congratulations, a round of applause. And I do have some, a few words from, from Dr. Allman I wanted to share with you. So Anne's wealth of knowledge in college and career pathways helped LBUSD provide innovative and relevant options for student learning. She was essential in establishing and building relationships, relationships with the local community colleges that have benefited our students. We appreciate the legacy that you, that you built in our college and career readiness office. And it's, it's continuing now after you've moved on. So special thank, congratulations, you know, your six years of service to Laguna Beach. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now it's time for your speech. Before you commute, it's fine to.
Just a shout out to our seniors there, Joanna and Luke. Just happy graduation, guys. It's, it's cool to see you here too, and I love you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone want to say a few words to Anne before I move to the next retiree?
I would just like to tell everyone, if they haven't experienced it, Anne always shared so much information with parents using the PTA meeting and any other resource so that she could help the parents go through those high school years and guide their students. It's, it's very stressful for them. And so she really provided a wealth of information in addition to what she provided for the students. Thank you.
Remember Perry, are you trying to say, I see you nodding.
Oh, I'm just nodding. Anne has been fabulous for our students.
She has always been impressive, has kids in her space, always wanting to talk about the program and enroll other people, recruit other people in. So and you'll be missed. We wish you well in the next chapter.
All right. And following the alphabetical, the next would be Betsy, if you can unmute and then. There you go, Betsy.
Boy.
So, so Betsy spent 14 years with Laguna Beach Unified School District in the role of Special Education IA. And for many of those years, she was a lead IA at the high school, just doing, there's, there's so much that goes into just to running a special education program and keeping all the, making sure everyone's in the right spot and all the students have the proper supports that they need. And she was just, she did an incredible job. So I have a few words that Irene wanted to share. Betsy has been a model employee. Her dedication to her department is unlike any other. She has served as lead IA for several years and has been instrumental in navigating high levels of support for our students. Her leadership and service of students will be missed. So like I said, with the 14 years of service, we thank you so much for all you did to support the most needed students at the high school. And you did, again, just did it with grace and, and it was, it was beautiful to see. And we appreciate all that you did, all that you did for our students at Laguna Beach High School. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to echo what Anne said. Congratulations to our seniors today was so much fun. There, it's always the best day when they finish up their finals and go in the office and everybody cheers them on and we ring the bell. And this senior class in particular, for some reason, has just been one of my favorites. And to have seen them, you know, through ninth grade to now and graduating, it's been, it's been really great to go out on a high note. And so thank you all so much for the last 14 years.
Thank you, Betsy.
Betsy, thank you so much for making such a difference with kids. And I know you have a, you have smaller or volume of kids than Anne, but what you did with them, you changed their lives. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I've never, never met you, never worked with you, but I do have friends to have. And I sincerely, you know, thank you for all the work you do for them. And seeing where they've come, where they've been and where they've, and where they are now is just so incredible. And I'm so happy that they, they had you along the way and you were there to help them.
Thank you, Soren.
Thank you for all the years and the best of luck in whatever the future brings for you.
Thank you.
That's a lot, Betsy. Thank you so much, Betsy. All right, the next retiree that we're celebrating, so if Donna Todd can please turn off, turn on her camera. Hi, Donna.
Hi.
Long time no see.
Yeah.
Donna spent 20 years of her life serving and supporting long Logan Beach Unified School District, the high school, as well as in instructional services department. So I've just got a few words to share from, from Dr. Chad Mayberry. So again, always the friendly voice at the front desk or on the other end of the phone line. Donna was everyone's go-to for finding answers to those hard to figure out questions. She was warm and responsive to everyone, whether you were the school office staff, a parent, a teacher, principal, or superintendent. Congrats, Donna. So I guess I, I, it was a pleasure working with you. And again, it's, like I said, the amount of support that you provided over the 20 years. You were, you were an incredible resource and for the school district. And again, just thank you so much for your, your dedication to, to us and giving, giving us 20 years of, of you, Donna, to, to. It was, it was, it was a good ride and we're, we're so appreciative. So thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Being on this board meeting reminds me of being at work. Chad was discussing and working on Chad. I, I, it brings back a lot of memories. And you're still working at it and good for you. And thank you, everybody. It's been a great retirement so far and I appreciate the 20 years that I spent there. I really enjoyed. And I have to say, I'm going to miss graduation for the kids. I spent 15 years going to graduation, often being the name reader at graduation. And that was really a highlight of my 15 years at the high school. And so anyway, thank you. It's been fun.
Donna, we're, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss the, how resourceful you are to all of us. Whether coming in as a parent or a board member who doesn't know what she's accomplished either, you're always just there. So
Thank you.
Helps. So thank you. And thank you for all you've done for the kids as well.
Thank you.
We're a miss.
Thank you, Donna. It's, it's a lot of years, a lot of dedication. You've given us a lot and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I always appreciated all of the board feedback too. All of the board members were brought up great points and it was so interesting to learn more and, and hear the other perspectives. So thank you to all the board members too.
We adore about you. I hope you continue to enjoy retirement and it's just better than you.
Keeping busy with, with long hikes.
No, babysitting a lot. I have a new grandchild.
Picture born lucky. Very cute.
Yep.
We miss you, but we're glad that you're happy in your retirement and you have your new little grandchild.
Thank you, Dee. Appreciate it.
I just want to add in one more. I didn't put this in there. Everybody should have a Donna when they come to a district. Because I can't tell you how many times I'd be like, what did this program look like in 2012?
And Donna knew.
She would find some files, she pulled it up. This is how we used to do it. Then we got a new superintendent. Then there was a new principal. I mean, just, I can't even, I can't even explain how helpful and knowledgeable she was. So everybody should have a Donna when they come to.
Thanks, Chad.
So true.
We miss you.
I appreciate it. I miss all you guys too.
All right. Well, again, congratulations once again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. All right. And last but not least, we have Gwen Myers. Turn on your camera.
Hi there, everybody.
Hi Gwen. It's great to see you.
Yeah. It's great to see you all again too.
So Gwen spent 21 of her years with us in Logan Beach Unified School District. A lot of those years she spent supporting the TMS office. And I have a few words that, that Joe shared, wanted to share. So let me read those off. So Thurston Middle School would like to congratulate Gwen with her much deserved retirement. We appreciate all of her, her work over the years and the kindness, thoughtfulness and integrity that she applied in all that she did. We love you, Gwen. Is from your, your family at TMS. And I can tell you, you, you were again, incredible resource. I, it was a pleasure working with you for the, for the, my, my last six or seven years, but you were, you were cherished. You, you continue to be. And we thank you so much for just your dedication to the community, to the school district and all you did to, to support the students that came through TMS. So thank you so much, Gwen.
Thank you. It was fun. It, it was great working for the district. I love being part of the school community, either TOW or TMS. And I feel like people do such good work in this district and the challenges of the last year and a half. People rose to the occasion and it, it was impressive and inspiring to see.
Thank you, Gwen. Like any of the, of you really long-term employees and as Dr. Mayberry referred to, you do become the rocks that the newer people coming in depend on because you know what's gone on before and you're such a great point of reference. But what, I would compliment you on your calm demeanor. It's really valuable to have that as the rock that people can depend on. But I most, I also think of the days at Lang Park with River and Morgan.
Yes. Oh gosh.
And they were pre-schoolers.
So I gotta say, it's, it's two generations of, of students for Logan Beach High School, myself, my husband and our kids. So.
That's right. And we're not that old. It can't be. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think Margaret wants to say something.
Yes. First of all, I would like to say to all of our classified employees that have retired in the last two years. Thank you for your dedication, your gap in your foundational knowledge that you brought to the district is certainly missed. But you were well prepared on planning your retirement and made sure that the people stepping into your spot were, were prepared to do the job. Some of it takes some years to process, but we thank you again for your dedication as, and as president of CSCA, I would like to thank many of you who either through your honest and sincere comments regarding our organization or serving as in various positions on the executive board or as site representatives. Those items mean very, very much to me personally because you were part of the whole process of this last years for me. And we're filling your, your shoes, but it's taking a little while. I don't want to put any guilt on you. But thank you so much for all of your years of dedication to LBUSD.
Thanks, everybody.
Great to see you.
Thank you, Gwen.
Thank you. Bye. Congratulations to everybody else that retired this year too.
Awesome. All right. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Thank you.
That's very nice. Okay. So that moves us to eight D. Just the recognition of our 2021 student board members. And the board recognizes Joanna Salt and Soren Tippel and appreciation of their outstanding and dedicated service to Logan Beach Unified School District as the 2021's ever optimistic and filled with gratitude student board members. We want to thank you for your distinguished service representing all students. You guys really raised the bar. And Dr. Bory wanted me to extend how proud he is of both of you and being able to to be here and watch you guys grow. I mean, this is not being here, but how grateful he is and your growth. And he's going to miss you guys so much. So I must add share that. And then I know that you guys have your little awards. So you guys want to show them? Do you want to speak first and then the board can all chiming in? Oh, look at this. Okay. I think we just go around. We start with member Vickers. We can go around and we can all thank you guys. Or would you guys like to speak first? So now you guys have stuff prepared.
Um, I, I don't know. I'll just go, I'll just say thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it so much. I've learned and gotten so much experience through this and it's been so important for me. And I know Soren too, and taking this experience in a college is something that's so valuable, I think. And it's taught me a lot about interacting with others and how to navigate tough situations. So thank you all so much. You all have been so great. And yeah, thank you so much.
I miss you so much. So, Ren.
And something as well, you know, I think that as I said, it's definitely, I've learned so much and I'm got to be able to, you know, affect so much and get some output as well as the amazing input. It's been definitely, it's been, it's been a year to be a student board representative. We've had so many events and conversations. Sometimes going a little, a little off the train tracks, but it's all, all, a lot of learning for me at least. I don't know how you guys felt about it. But yeah, I've really enjoyed my time being, being here and being able to share the voice of students and increase the voice of students as well. As today, we had you on eight, a fifth grader on here as well as you've had middle school speakers. And I think that we're doing a great job of continuing to elevate student voices and hoping to continue to do so. And I think, you know, the last, lastly, I think that the board, this board plays such an important role in our amazing school district. Now we can continue to, you know, push for innovation. Despite the challenges that, that come. And we've seen the challenges that come this year. But I think there, there is a lot that, you know, that, that we can do as an amazing board to help our amazing community. And our staff, of course, and ensuring that our students are as prepared as they can be for the crazy future that's coming that Joanna and I are walking into. And I'm so honored to have this position and so grateful for the opportunity. So thank you all.
You guys did raise the bar. Okay. I'm going to start with member Vickers and of course, are any cabinet members or Margaret and Sarah, if you guys want to say anything, I don't, everyone is welcome to go ahead.
Thank you both very much for taking on this role. Your contributions have been very valuable to me as a board member. And I had wanted to bring back the more elevated student board rep position and it's been, it's been great. And you have really risen to that occasion. But I, but I hope that you take away from it, besides seeing that education has a lot of, as you mentioned, Soren, with the template for, for the LCAP, a lot of bureaucratic overload and our administrators know how to work through that, but it takes a lot of time so that change doesn't happen quickly. I think you also have seen in our community that a lot of people want to be involved, which makes decision-making and any kind of changes more challenging. And it's very important to hear those voices. But what I really want to say to you is that I, I hope you realize the importance of your voice and that your voices have real value. And you both have had the courage in our meetings to speak out and to share your opinions and your point of views. And that has been something you should be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very kind and very, very wise as well. Make sure to think about those words.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Number Perry.
Okay. Joanna and Soren, you have been fabulous. I have so enjoyed hearing your, you representing student voice and the way that you brought in Thurston students, top of the world students, El Moro students. And really, you know, you were really so encompassing. I got to attend the fishbowl that Soren kind of organized and that you went out of the way to do something that was really valuable for everybody. I, for a lot of the board meetings, you guys were my favorite part. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. It's very kind. I'm, I'm glad we were able to keep you entertained.
Kelly, would you like to say something?
I've just been very impressed with the two board members. I don't remember being in high school with anyone who is so capable, competent and coherent as these two, as these two members. I'm interested to know where, where they're going for college.
I can go first. I'm going to San Francisco State University and I'm majoring in criminal justice studies. And hopefully psychology.
Good for you.
Thank you.
To its school.
And then I'm going to IEE University in Madrid and I'm studying politics, philosophy, law and economics program.
Very impressive. Thank you.
So I'm hearing you say that. I'm just curious, will you be taking courses in Spanish?
Uh, mostly, I think they're all, they're all English. I hope to immerse myself enough to learn Spanish though as well.
Thank you.
Soren, you're always raising a bar. Just raising a bar. Okay. Clerk Osborne, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I'm Soren and Joanna. Thank you guys so much for all you did. You know, since I've been on the board on December, I think what sticks out is how calm and professional you guys have been. I think that's going to be a skill that you can take with you to a lot of situations. It's been quite a journey and I'm always impressed with your, your disposition. I also think the endurance that you've gained through these very long board meetings, you're going to take that with you to a lot of future meetings. Not all meetings are quick and there's definitely a buildup that I think you've built up here. And you have some good experience with parliamentary procedure. And I think you could bring that into your career, into future boards you might sit on, either professional or personal. There's a lot of really interesting things in your life that I think you'll do that you might reflect back on parliamentary procedure and say, I know that, I remember that. So I, I guess I see you guys going great places. I'm really curious to, to follow and stay in touch with you guys over your next 10 years. And it's just really been an honor. You do light up our Zoom boxes. So best of luck to you and stay in touch.
Thank you so much. We, I will certainly try.
Yeah, thank you. I will.
Anyone else have comments? Okay. Wait. Oh, go ahead, Margaret.
I would just like to say that it is a pleasure to see the student body. I know when I first started being assistant president, we didn't have students. And that was a push that was really advocated by a few of the board members. And it is a pleasure to hear from, from the students, what's happening at the sites. So I, I've enjoyed that transition and I really wish both of you the most success you can imagine. And the ability to have, as was said, the perseverance to sit through some of these meetings. So that alone requires great patience. So anyway, with that, best wishes, happy graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
President Norman, if I could add one comment. So thank you, Johanna Soren. It actually, impressive has been the word that I've heard quite a few times. You're, you've learned a lot of patience and dealing and leadership. And it's going to help you in life. And I hope you remember all the lessons you have and take it with you. I don't think the meetings have been that bad, Margaret. Okay. So, but it's, uh, it's been, it's been really great to see you guys, especially just thinking in back in my mind, you're in high school. I don't know if I could have given the comments or the feedback you had in high school. So way to go. Good luck. And we'll miss you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Definitely. I concur as well. I mean, just thank you so much for your service. It's, it's been great to kind of just hear your voice and hear your perspective. And Soren, you've definitely cracked it a few times. So it's, uh, it's always made it quite enjoyable. But I said, I know there are plenty of other maybe more attractive ways you could be spending your time on a Tuesday, a Thursday night. And your dedication to, to this role is much appreciated and definitely valued. So thank you both very much and wish you the best of luck in your, your future endeavors. So be well and be safe.
Thank you.
And look for anyone else to unmute. That might be it then. I do want to, I do want to thank you. A suggestion, it's a great book, Dare to Lead by Bernadine Brown, which you guys might really like. And take from here. Thank you for the bad parliamentary rules we taught you as well, you know, and just join with us and while we learn. And then they guess, they both have all the opportunities that you desire. Maybe it just come upon you. You bother deserving of them and have been impressive to us. So thank you. And I, I know you guys are going to get your new awards because I think your current ones have something fun on them.
And in keeping so good, I always remembering to ask, ask the student, but it was a little bumpy there, but we, we definitely hit our stride these past meetings.
Yeah. That's important part. It's a part we all liked.
Yeah. Thank you so much, President Norman. And you've been great and making sure we're heard. Thank you.
Your voices are the best. So thank you so much. And with that, we're going to move on to nine A. Information item. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak to on the update? Um, information item. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak to the, on the update of the 18 month plan to accelerate learning?
Uh, there are no hands up at this time.
Wow, since there are no comments, Dr. Mary, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is, uh, this is an update to the presentation and the plan that we presented back in April, uh, April 22nd. At Earth Day. Uh, we want to give you a little bit update as you wrap up the year. Uh, if you remember from that plan, we really broke it down into, into three parts. Come, what was happening in the spring? What was happening in the summers, uh, the summer and next, uh, as well as next school year. Uh, and a lot of that is connected to some of these funds, these one-time funds, the COVID relief funds that we're getting. And so this is just, just a quick update and hope to kind of continue to update this periodically. Around that. So I, the update is, is kind of broken up into two areas. If you go to the next slide, really around reopening school. And then our, our system of intervention.
Chad, can you hold on a second? I am having technical difficulties.
Yep, no problem.
Well, you know what? We can, we could take a 10 minute break, let her do that. Everybody can. Take a quick break and then we can come right back. Actually, we have five minutes. How about that? If we come back at seven thirty-eight. All that Victoria, get that working. See you guys at seven thirty-eight. Don't forget to mute.
Have expanded dual enrollment for next year. We're offering two classes with IVC as part of our partnership with them. And those are listed here on the slide, but and we'll have two in the spring as well. So that's that's due to increased interest from students who are taking those classes. So we used to be able to offer barely offer one. Now we we are filling up one and we're going to be offered two next year. So that's exciting. And then one of the things that came out, another thing that came out of the distance learning this year was the interest in keeping some of our virtual meetings, in this case of referencing specifically special education. I individual education plans or five or four plans with teams to keep a virtual option. Although we'll be in person, but we want to keep that option. There's a lot of parents that have interest in that. That there is some efficiency to that. We'll still have an obviously in-person option if parents want that, but we'll play and keep that available for for IP team meetings. And then just to talk on the next slide, just talk a little bit about some of the interventions enrichment to really help personalize the learning. We have a lot of data analysis to do this summer, specifically around those I read assessments that are just finished up. We have our other assessments that we continue that we've continued to implement during this time. We'll be looking, continue to look at teams will continue to get the common form of assessments. Those are subject areas and grade levels. We just, you know, we'll be wrapping up course finals and we'll have grades to look at. So really digging into those so teachers can use that information to provide potentially interventions in the summer, but also getting ready for next school year. That leads to the next piece here around summer learning. We have really kind of broken into three groups here. We have one that's more targeted intervention or credit recovery. Right now we have, just as of the end of last week, we have about half, we have 110 registered out of 290 invites. For the our new program, we have 405 registered over the two weeks. So some of those could be more than one student, but we're excited that there's a brand new program that has that many students that are interested in it this year. And then a dual enrollment is almost full with IVC for social psychology. And then the last thing on this slide that I think is really important is our continued for intervention supports or continued partnerships. We're continuing to work with college and career advantage or CCA around career tech education classes at the high school. We're looking at different partnerships beyond the high school, maybe adult dad, middle school, elementary. We think that's a really important to continue to expand that partnership. And then the Boys and Girls Club is going to be supporting our summer programs this year as well as continuing in the fall. And then I do want to make a very specific reference to school power, their COVID support program. They're doing their third round of supporting families right now. And as part of that partnership, they're offering scholarships to to students and our community liaison. Ivan is helping with that as much as we can. And so really value that partnership. I think it's a really good way to use community resources so that students can have, continue to learn and continue how programs available in the summer that may not have otherwise. And then the next slide talks a little bit more around the academic intervention piece. We are planning to this, we mentioned this back in April, playing to increase academic intervention staff at the elementary specifically in the area of math. Likely a certificated position. And then in the middle school, we look to increase some of our peer educator classified staff support for intervention. And then all the schools are looking, all four schools are looking at designing specific time for during the school day for targeted intervention or enrichment for students. So that's built into the school day. Always one of the challenges with a really well-written intervention system is trying to build it into the school day. Not everyone's available before after school or and so that has been an ongoing priority for our school leadership teams. I will continue to look at ways to decrease that student to teacher ratio. So we'll have some additional teachers similar to what we had this year. As we finish up the schedules here at the end of the school year and into the summer, we'll have a better idea how many teachers or continue to look at that. The schedules are finishing up their work and then universal screeners will continue that we expanded quite a bit this year. We'll continue with that. We have a new adaptive online ELD program for English learners. A lot of vertical articulation has been done and will continue its plan for those first few days. We come back. The teachers all come back in in August. And so a lot of more academic interventions there. If you go to the next side, just want to talk a little bit about the social emotional support. We're adding additional student support specialists at the K-12 to kind of expand that social emotional support services with some of these grant, these one-time funds. We're continuing our social or K-12 social emotional screeners really does valuable tool that we continue to use and find ways to do it beyond just a couple of times a year and doing it in more, more frequency check-ins, quicker check-ins. We have new wellness places that are really in developmental stage or will have those at some point. And then the next school year, we're in a partnership with CHOC. Increasing our counseling services for English learners and low-income students with our community liaison position. We're continuing with our social emotional learning curriculum, which I said earlier with elementary level. And we have supplemental curriculum at the secondary level. And then we have some staff training that is planned around sort of practices, suicide prevention, mental health wellness, positive behavior, support interventions. And so really that that is kind of the how a lot of this has worked out and really these two two different groups of like how are we going to support students in their everyday experience, but also have very specific academic and social emotional targets and interventions that are available for when kids are struggling or maybe in a place where they're still trying to get caught up for whatever reason. With that, I hand it off back to you for questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members have question comments?
Thank you, Chad. It's great update and appreciate all the information, keeping us well informed. Thank you.
I think that is the consensus. Dr. Osborne, I just saw you unmuted. Want to say something?
Oh yeah, I wanted to ask Dr. Mayberry if there's any on those in-school hour interventions, if there's any ideas or any more information you can provide on what those might look like. And how they how they look different than pre-pandemic, because I know what they looked like with office hours, you know, in the pandemic year, but prior to that, maybe compare and contrast some of the ideas.
Yeah, I mean, there's still, there's still a lot of development in getting those ready, but in the at the elementary level, they're dedicating a chunk of their day, they've built out their their schedules to dedicate a chunk of day where we have intervention staff, some for reading, some for math. That will be working with specific grade levels at specific times. And during this time, there's there's different names for it, but one that I hear frequently is called no new teaching time. So it's a chance where kids aren't necessarily, if they're being pulled out or if they're in supports, we push into the class, they're not necessarily missing something new. All kids are doing something that supports them at their level, wherever they're at. But it could be small groups of one or two, it could be groups of five. Depends on what that need is, but that's planned out at the grade level. The at the secondary level, it's often referred to around the tutorial or an advisory period. There's a lot of different forms and I think they're still kind of working through the details of that, but those tend to be typically around the areas of literacy and math. Although sometimes they are built into that actual class period where it's connected to the actual period that they're taking, but in general, there are times where teachers are able to get with smaller groups of their own students or sometimes, you know, secondary level, those exchange students across other courses and say, you know, if there's two teachers of math that are working on a concept, they're going to grab kids across both classes or maybe three or four classes and say, we need to work on a specific concept with the eight of you. And so they're going to get extra time for that. So those are kind of the general feel for how they're they're where they're at right now.
Okay, yeah, that that helps a lot. And I think I was just thinking of, you know, I think it used to be called ESP at the middle school. I don't know the specifics of the terminology at the high school, but looking at ways that we can continuously improve that block of time based on what we learned, right? The last 18 months on how to really support students with very individual attention. It sounds like you're doing a great job trying to reconfigure that and not just go back to how we used to have it. Great, thank you.
Any additional comments? Um, I want to note my appreciation for all of our employees. It's commendable that they're always working to improve the opportunities, outcomes for our students, you know, with the equity, that they're building these relationships and they're focused on every student every day. We're grateful to all of you. We appreciate you more than we could say. Look to stand right at Margaret. I'm talking to everyone, Margaret. So really, thank you. Thanks, Chad, for this update. I know that since it's ever-changing until we get the end of, you have the trailers on the budget. We just don't know. We really appreciate you continuously updating us. I know it might seem like not overkill. But for you, it might seem like you're updating us with a lot of new information, but for us, it's really helpful. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, with this, we're going to move on to 10A. Mr. Collins, anyone wishing to speak on their approval of resolution number 21-11? Resolution of the Board of Education acting as a legislative body of community facilities district number 98-1 of looking to be unified school districts authorizing the levy of special taxes without within community facility district number 98.1 for fiscal year 2021.
There's no one at this at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon and Mr. Mayberry, I think the floor is both of yours, but I have and I had a note here to sure. So Mr. It's yours.
Yeah, I'll take it. Thank you. This is a annual resolution for our community facilities district. Also more well-known in the community is Melrose. It's a special tax on top of your traditional property tax that occurred in 1998. The CFD is is outside of our general fund, so there is no fiscal impact other than the administration and management of it. And you'll see the reports from David Tausig and Associates, now known as DTA that have are associated with this and it's required for us to bring back to the board annually so that we can levy these special taxes because we are the controlling body to pay the administration of of the tax levy. So happy to take any questions, but again, this is fairly fairly difficult.
Don't see it. Just got nods. Okay. I don't see any questions brewing. Fellow board and student members can have a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Still moved?
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Victor, second by Clark Osborne. Any discussion before we vote? Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Okay, Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry? She's nodding yes. Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. The motion carries five zero. And we're moving to 11A. Mr. Collins, anyone wishing to speak to the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AD 1200, chapter 1213 dash 1991 government code 3547.5 and CCR title five section 15449 point 21 dash point 24 negotiating agreement with the California School Employee Association, thank you, Margaret, CFE. And it's looking to be chapter number 131 and we're going to be unified school district.
There is no one at this time.
Uh, thank you for that. And the Mr. Collins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. So the association and the district reached a tentative agreement for the 2021-2024 successor agreement. And as you're aware, the district and the association utilized interest-based bargaining, IBB as the process. The tentative agreement attached includes a 4% salary increase and both parties agree to reopen Article 12 pain allowances and Article 24 health benefits at a meeting in the fall to negotiate potential one-time funds available as a result of the COVID-19 stimulus dollars by October. And with that, we bring this to the board for your ratification.
Are there any questions? Any comments? I don't see any. Well, fellow board members, student reps, I am not forgetting you. I'm actually on these next two items, not including you by law. So I'm careful just to pick it. Was that Clark Osborne making a motion to move? That's awesome. Have a second?
Second.
Member Vickers? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No discussion. Just thank you to both teams for their dedication and a lot of their work was done on Zoom, which I know makes it more of a challenge, but to continue to uphold IBB. Thank you.
We all did over that. Okay, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
For Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
She's nodding yes.
Yes. Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. We're moving to item 11B. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the ratification of the proposal in accordance with AD 1200? Chapter 1213 dash 1991 government code 3547.5 and the CCR title five section 15449 point 21, 2020 compensation proposal with non-represented classified and certificate.
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions from board members? Not, may I please have a motion? Number Vickers? Move. And number Kelly, a second? Any discussion? Again, we'd like to thank all the work everyone has done on this. And hasn't been the easiest year to get all this done, but we are appreciative of all of our employees. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. So the motion carries five zero. We're moving to item 12 consent calendar. Mr. Collins, is there one wishing to speak on the consent counter items this evening?
There are no hands up at this time.
Thank you so much. With that, let me get to this. This, we're going to move to B. Do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question, not have a board discussion and vote on items separately, but just a comment or question? And any student rep on any of the consent items? I do not see any questions or comments. Okay. So before we move to a motion, does anyone want to pull any of the items off of consent? So fellow board members, student members, can I have a motion? Johanna wink wink and a second to approve all items C through N?
Second.
Was there a motion on the floor?
I was waiting for a motion.
I move approval of items, a consent counter item C through N.
Thank you.
Second.
So I think member Kelly got that one. Okay, any discussion? Oh, don't. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student board member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Armendon?
Yes. The motion carries five zero. So we're moving to 13A governance. Mr. Collins, is there anyone wishing to speak on the approval of the dissolution of the resolution 2003 granting emergency powers to superintendent or designated sign March 13, 2020?
There is no one at this time.
Since there are no comments, I'll leave us in this. On May 27, 2021, after some discussion by the board, the board directed staff to bring the items forward on June 8 for approval of dissolution on June 15, 2021, or when the governor declares there's no longer emergency. I'd like to make a motion to dissolve resolution 2030 when the governor declares there's no longer emergency. Oh, board members or student member, can I have a second?
The motion is, you don't have a date, sir. None of this motion you have just whenever the governor makes a declaration?
When the governor declares there's no longer an emergency. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call beginning with the student or member provisional vote?
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
No.
President Armendon?
Yes. So the motion carries four zero. Okay, this brings us to B, board reports. For new listeners, it's sections for board members to provide a brief report to their fellow members that falls within the scope of their roles, board members for LBSD. And as a reminder, I'll request for items to be added to future agenda, presented and writing to the superintendent. Member Vickers, the floor is yours.
I don't think really I've attended anything that I can bring to mind recently. It hasn't been that long since our last meeting. I really have been watching with interest the articles on the state looking at the math and anticipate that that will be a future item for us to weigh in on as we go through these next months. And then watching, thinking of California with relief, watching other states put into place restrictions on what teachers can or cannot teach. And looking, thinking of it as a, the more global perspective, I find that very alarming. And comments from teachers in other states certainly share that concern. But I feel pretty confident that we won't be dealing with that in California. I certainly hope not. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, member Vickers. Member Perry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I attended the School Power Endowment and they are, you know, looking at their role a little bit differently now. They realize that the district is in good shape. They're in good shape also, but figuring out other ways that they can help our students. And one of the ways like Dr. Mayberry said is helping our needing needy families and they're looking for other things that they can do. I also attended a session with Dr. Timothy Fong, who I've met with before. He is probably the most renowned doctor on vaping in teens, but this report was on cannabis research initiative from UCLA. And he was really talking about how how many more young people are using that now since the pandemic and that they couldn't play sports, but they could get, you know, they could get their cannabis delivered from Amazon. And he had a lot of interesting information on how it, you know, looking at the good things it does, but also the negatives, especially for a developing brain and bringing down IQ points. And then from a a environmental standpoint, which I didn't know, each cannabis plant uses six gallons of water a day and it takes it 150 days to fruition. So they're very thirsty. I also attended a another seminar on the civics initiative and how much civics is important in our schools to prepare students to be good citizens in the future. And one interesting thing I got out of it was for nationwide, for every $50 we spend on STEM classes, we spend five cents on civics. And with the increased polarization and the increased distrust of government that this is an area that's really important now. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. I'm sorry. Member Kelly, the floor is yours.
And thank you. I want to congratulate School Power on the wonderful scholarship event and producing close to $40,000 in scholarships to our graduating seniors. I also want to thank the our school police officers for their their updates on electric bicycles and and how important it is for our kids to use caution. I was scared to death today as I was going down Glanary and two of our young students were on their electric bicycles with with helmets on, but had beautiful young women behind them, sitting back behind them, zigzagging on Glanary and then up towards the school. I think it's appalling. I think our police officers should be giving them tickets or doing something because we're going to have some of our kids getting killed with those. And I'm looking forward to all the graduation activities that I'm going to this week and meeting in person. Our representatives, our student representatives to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kelly. Clerk Osborne, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yes, let's see, in the last 10 days since our prior board meeting, I attended the second of the secondary scheduling talks. That was really interesting to hear more perspectives. I attended the Challenge Success Fish Bowl and listen, Soren was there and also gained some, some different perspectives on experiences at the elementary all the way through secondary level. I am working with our CSBA organization as well as our state senator and state assemblywoman to help make our point on Universal TK and the equitable funding for community funded versus LCSF, LCFF districts known and make sure that that point is elevated, especially in these last critical weeks of legislation. I am really looking forward to attending those graduations as Dr. Kelly said, the Thurston and the high school graduations. And then looking forward to our board policy workshop over the summer. I'm doing some initial preliminary research on some of the sustainability practices that are out there in CSBA's model policies. I'm just trying to understand a little bit of the scope. There was a fellow district that won at the Green Achiever level from the California Department and US Department of Education, which one of our sites won as well. And I was noting some of their electric bus components. So just trying to understand the the landscape there in preparation for our summer workshops. And then last, I wanted to leave everybody with a little bit of analogy from my days running marathons. So I heard this great analogy to when we're done with a marathon, which for fellow board members who've served on this board much longer and through more tumultuous times than I have and for administrators, staff. You know, after a marathon, we rest and we rest to recover and we rest to be able to become stronger and come back into the the race or the sport or the activity stronger. So I just want to encourage everybody to make sure that we use some of our time this summer, whatever that may be, for that growth and that rest. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That makes me think of not in discussion, I was comments. It just makes me think of Dr. Stuart Brown, who said the opposite of play is not work, the opposite of play is depression. And so we must all take our our time off to play or as challenge success as PDF. Right? We all have that downtime. It's important. Bit of that. Congratulations to students and parents. This is such an exciting time. Reflecting back, part of the part of that relaxation is in the reflection, looking back and the collective look lift that got us this point was extraordinary to witness from all of you. I'm excited at the signs of the rhythms of normalcy as we are working our way out of pandemic. I am disturbed and sometimes frightened by other states, countries that are not as far along as we are. And hoping that we'll all work to get them there. I'm working on legislative level work as well. And the, we have a very busy summer upon us. Jan and I sat in the last equity meeting for the school year that wrapped up and left with lots of planning for the summer so that we could leap back in to work with the broader stakeholders in this important work. And then preparing for our board policy meetings throughout the summer. I've been reading all of our policies and CSBA's policies and preparing them and And then preparing for our board policy meetings uh throughout the summer, I've been reading all of our policies and CSBA's policies and preparing them and um looking at other districts and what other they're doing and best practices. Um, and I'm preparing for the student, uh, the superintendent evaluation. So I'm excited for all the promotions and graduations and to see people in person. And uh especially our graduation, we have one to really to send our seniors off and to be able to see our our um two leaders, board reps in person graduating, I'm so excited about, so. That is all I have, and we normally get a superintendent report, since he has helped see me. We will go to enrichment, and so uh on fourteen A, the next regular scheduled business meeting is June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Um, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Okay, Perry? Victoria, I'm gonna let you pick the second, I can make that which one. And as a reminder, BB ninety two hundred, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual power until we're seated again. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, beginning with the student board member provisional vote, last one.
Johanna?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clark Osborne?
Yes.
President Armended.
Yes, motion carries five zero. For one, celebrate rest.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Congratulations.